... please your eyes. We have an invitation by Mr. Henry, followed by the other two leaders.
Our most precious Father, we give thank you for the courage of the Lord again coming to do the business of the city. And we ask you of God, the Lord, for everything that you do. And, Heavenly Father, we ask you to be with our sacred fourteen citizens in this city, aid and help to our community, your children, that you can say, be with all of us, Lord, and do the business. Our very job is just to keep them well and keep them healthy. Come, excellent, Heavenly Father, continue to be with our loved ones, Lord, that's lost loved ones, and we continue to ask you to build them, Lord. Be with those that are sick, give them water, especially be with our ex-marriage and couples, if they need, so that they can take their strength from them, and let us call you the saints and the living.
I am glad that you're here, the United States of America, and interior republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Chief. Local.
Crable.
Here.
Heathley.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
President. Mr. Crable, if you would, excuse me, tomorrow. Motion is second, excuse me, Mr. Martin, all clear, say aye. At five, at the same time. Mr. Martin, please. Need approval minutes of August 10, 2013?
Is on him.
Flag. Motion is second, any discussion on the minutes? More change in name from Brian to Ryan. I like the way. We will place where Brian and said Brian says Brian. He must be Brian. All favor approval minutes, aye. At the same time, it's been approved. Election appointments, uh, where you go.
Thanks, President. Uh, when the, uh, formation of the, um, county transit, uh, system occurred, uh, the, uh, doing the way of earthworks ended going under one entity, as part of that agreement, um, cities of Newark and Heath were designated an additional combined appointment on the Lincoln County Transit Board. And we should have in your packet of information a letter signed by, uh, Mayor Jeff Paul and by myself, um, serving as a letter to appoint Deborah Cole to be, to be the joint, uh, appointment, uh, to fill an expired term. So, uh, Deb, appreciate you doing that. Thank you very much, and I know you do a nice, dedicated job for both communities. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Special orders and committees, there are none. Unfinished business, there is none. Traditionally communications, none. Brings us to the listener section, any of those who'd like to speak, approach the podium, take your name, address, tell us where you're.
Becky Goodwin, sixteen eleven Hebron Road. Just want to say thanks again to City of Heath, Parks Department, and all those wonderful people over there at the pool, and then thanks again for, um, allowing us to have another dog paddle and over well, just for the ones that didn't hear, we're at a five thousand mark again. We have three hundred dogs and six hundred people. It's an awesome event, you got to be there. Um, I just want to say thanks to everybody and, um, honestly, the Parks Department over there and the people working the pool, they enjoy it too, and we try to help each other at the end of the work, so. I hope you don't have any complaints, but anyway, I'd like to thank the whole, the whole society. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other visitors who'd like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to committee reports. My name's the budget, Mr. Crable.
Mr. President, please. Let the city, we had one legislative request, the request to appropriate twenty thousand dollars to the general fund. Committee for police machines equipment for, uh, installing his vehicle repairs to the, uh, police cars. Don't anticipate a shortage of, you know, in the city. Um, was it for the agenda for the city? I really did, really helped, nothing bad. Tim Keller, any?
Thank you.
Thank you. Public services, uh, as far as I care, and, uh, I feel that the public service, they will be meeting next Monday, October twenty-sixth, at five thirty. Keller, we had nothing to add. You. Thanks. Public safety, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public safety, that's August twelfth, and five thirty-three, the fire. Under July statistics, the fire runs, goes total of forty-two, and year-to-date total of two hundred and forty-eight. The EMS runs are one hundred and sixty-seven, with the year-to-date total of one thousand one hundred and twenty-four. Under transport, there's a monthly total of eighty-two, with year-to-date total of six hundred and seventeen. Uh, under medical aid, there were a total of forty-five, there were eighteen fires, twenty-seven EMS, and they were, uh, thirty-four went to Newark, month of the year, uh, seven, uh, looking township, and one degree. Then under medical aid received, the city of Heath received twenty-six, sixteen under the fire, and sixteen were EMS, and they received from Newark, Hebron, and Gary, and the Lincoln Township. There was one legislative request, it was postponed until the next meeting. On the monthly expense report, uh, July two thousand thirteen wages were sixty-four thousand five hundred fifty dollars and eighty-seven cents, with, uh, overtime of twenty-four thousand nine hundred twenty-two dollars and ninety-two cents, with year-to-date total of one thirty-four, two seventy-one, fifty-six cents. Under equipment, uh, agent two, uh, the exhaust was broke, the captain Kozowski was able to repair that. And the medic eight-nine has some sensors, he'll be prepared that he can do that, but personnel, uh, the court had to have surgery, he's going to be out for at least six weeks. And then under training, uh, the chief is working with J's on the truck expedition, um, expedition, of course, they're working with multiple markets, enjoying helping pay because it's cost for that, that the train's about seven thousand dollars. And then the chief also let us know that, uh, our cars, that we obtained, our CPR cars, first increments we obtained, have now expired, so he's going to do another training for salesmen to do that. Under old business ladder pump testing is complete. Under new business hose testing, still continuing for some of the hoses. And, uh, there are quite a few that are failing, chief stated, and then he brought up the E F recovery, which is the fire software. Uh, there are fees that weren't budgeted, but these were fees that, uh, we scheduled to recall, uh, when, when, uh, when it was originally in progress, in that court, right? I guess, or the cap court, it's time to run that in, the poses herself. What the chief's going to find out is, uh, uh, is going to let in to make sure that we're not getting overcharged or something, and we set it before the curve call, turn call, and so we'll, we'll go for next week. With that, we adjourn at five forty-eight, and we will move on to police. Uh, under police, uh, police business, calls for service one thousand five hundred four, offensive reports one thirty, arrest of thirty-seven, accidents twenty-seven, citations sixty-one. There are total of forty-nine false marks in the city, twenty-five in the commercial and for as usual. For July overtime, uh, there was ten thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars, with year-to-date total of sixty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars. This stamp, under previous year. Then under other, we had the whole part supergraves. Chief had mentioned that, uh, the crews went pretty well, they did issue twenty-three citations over two nights. There were eighty-six calls for service, um, on Friday, and there were ninety on Saturday. This is the first year that someone was charged, was street racing, and most of the citations were for screwing tires. Three after one for accidents, there was a drunk driver, and out of all the citations, only four of them were actually low part participants. Under legislative request, there was one request to appropriate twenty thousand dollars to the general fund to transfer, um, to the police machines equipment, basically for vehicle repairs, because the chief, uh, had anticipated shortings to the budget. With that, we adjourn at six oh three. Uh, Chief Shepherd, you have anything to add?
No, sir.
The Chief Shepherd, uh, is Chief Iden Shepherd?
No.
Okay, we'll make sure. Thank you.
Streets and drayleys, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The streets and drayleys committee met at the city at five thirty, and Bob Keller gave his, his report, uh, the first only agenda was, uh, Mr. Aaron Kelly, seventeen sixty-nine, first to draw, in Coral Ridge, was there, which is concerned about the range of the ditch behind his house. Uh, he wanted to know about the maintenance of the ditch. Uh, the mayor asked, uh, if there was a definite city right-of-way with a Ford Eastman in this, uh, ditch, and John Thompson, uh, yes, there is, and, uh, the city has allowed, uh, pipes to be put in somewhere inside, up in Coral Ridge. Uh, after further discussion, it was decided that Bob would get Mr. Kelly next week. Uh, Mr. Kelly was, uh, willing to take and lead, uh, folks in piping and do some of the work, but, uh, Bob would get, get with him and they then, uh, next week to see about cleaning the ditch out and starting the process. Uh, the other thing on the agenda, the rock, uh, rock salt price was, uh, forty-eight dollars per cent. Uh, the all, uh, the order is already the pay, and, uh, we have to take eighty percent of what we were. Uh, second item, mine, making thermoplast, uh, is on order, and, uh, within the next two to three weeks, we'll be starting to do this work. Uh, the paving is complete, we are very happy with that. Uh, the boxes on the street are, are being worked on, and some have already been done. Uh, fourth item, and as Bob was discussing, the, the future equipment needs, and, uh, one is a dump truck, the one we need to replace is a nineteen ninety-three model, and it's, uh, seen its, its course. Uh, to replace a new one, the cost would be about a hundred thousand dollars. Also, a street grinder was, uh, a price of a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand for new. Uh, the mayor asked if, uh, we could look into the possibility of renting one from another city, and Bob said he would look into that. And Bob also said that, uh, we don't, if we don't do something pretty soon about the dump truck, we're going to be, you know, real hurt. Uh, street signs, uh, cost to do the rest of the city is about twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, the other signs that, uh, kind of messed up, uh, the ones that were put up are on order, and, uh, yeah, the time will take, put up a sign to be determined on how we would be able to finance, I mean, through capital improvements or out of the street department budget. Uh, with nothing else to report, the meeting was adjourned at six fourteen, ten. Bob, anything you'd like to add?
Nothing, thanks. That's all. Thank you. Community development committee, Mr. Henry.
Our next meeting for the, the mayor's development committee, we reached a general for two thousand thirteen, the last thirty-three, yeah? John, do you have anything to add?
Oh, thank you.
Mayor?
Not thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Parks Recreation and David Shea, Mrs. Cole.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks Recreation and David Shea have a meeting at six fourteen. First item on the agenda was closing the pool. Uh, Director Gallo reported this about yesterday, this year. He will have a report next month, having closing out some of the client numbers, anticipating the lowest income of the year since the emergence of that guy. Will probably have to pay more into that service due to lower revenue, because of the weather. Report next month will probably not be totally complete, the most information available for the report. There's a question from the mayor about whether colleges, which is a semester, is impacted, um, this, this pool this season, and, um, it did not appear to. They'll be looking at improvements due to maintenance, such as the activity as well. Second item on the agenda was the dog paddle. Um, Director Gallo referred to Becky Goodwin to report on that, she reported it was a little grid, that is, for a few minutes ago. T one hundred was there, at least six hundred people and three hundred dogs, think they're about the five thousand dollar mark in this year, which will be the only one annual shelter. Thirty to forty rabies shots, who are given ten dollars each, and at least thirteen dog licenses. Animal control is also there to help maintain the order, and it worked very well. Third item is playground equipment in Yellow Park. Um, they're looking to try to get that scheduled for opposite construction for installation. Um, the mayor received an email from the local music instructor, HHS, that we have volunteered opportunities for students, and they're exploring the possibility of having this space as project as part of the community event. Uh, fourth item was food growth, uh, that went out for mid, and the inspectors were jerks to determine the best way to do it. Had a meeting, and anticipate they'll be fortified companies submitting bids. We're also doing research with Richard Glass to determine the best way to deal with this guy, right? Bid opening could be delayed by a couple of weeks, estimate maybe up to eighty thousand dollars. Under other items, I just reported that I attended the arts council meeting as a guest, just to be more responsive to questions from the community about what's happening with David Shea and Thomas. We also, um, questioned whether we should be able to tie to have the executive director or someone from the arts out of the board, come to one of our meetings, and we're probably going to meet him on October, uh, four hundred and ten. We adjourn at six thirty, we have a meeting, and that, Bob?
Nothing, Becky. Thank you. Plenary Commission, Mr. Crable.
Mr. President, uh, Plenary Commission will be, uh, tomorrow evening, Tuesday rather than Thursday this month, on the twentieth, so we have, we're offering that.
Okay.
Mayor?
Nothing, thanks. Thank you. That finishes the committee reports. Brings us to introduction of ordinances. Order sixty-nine, two thousand thirteen.
Order sixty-nine, two thousand thirteen, ordinance authorizing appropriation of twenty thousand dollars to the general fund to police services to cover anticipated shortages for vehicle repairs.
Order sixty-nine, two thousand thirteen, become the second reading. Order seventy, two thousand thirteen.
Order seventy, two thousand thirteen, ordinance authorizing the transfer of three thousand dollars from General Administration Services to General Administration Happy Land, purchasing a computer, for the city order, and other, um, discussed by others.
Order seventy, two thousand thirteen, become the second reading. Order seventy-one, two thousand thirteen.
Order seventy-one, two thousand thirteen, and ordinance authorizing appropriation of one thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-six cents within the five-dollar license tax fund, adjourned to Lincoln County, Texas.
Order seventy-one, two thousand thirteen, become the second reading. Order seventy-two, two thousand thirteen.
Order seventy-two, two thousand thirteen, and ordinance authorizing appropriation of one thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars and thirty-six cents within the general fund to service services to replace the drinking fountain for the police department.
Order seventy-two, two thousand thirteen, become the second reading. Order seventy-three, two thousand thirteen.
Order seventy-three, two thousand thirteen, and ordinance approving community investment area tax evasion, renouncing industrial lumber, seventeen, then the object, parkway, people piled, four three, and four six.
Order seventy-three, two thousand thirteen, become the second reading. Brings us to order seventy-four, two thousand thirteen.
Order seventy-four, two thousand thirteen, and ordinance to his own six seventy-five and grow, be compiled from M two, General Management District, to R two, General Residence District, to allow instruction of a comprehensive public health center.
Order seventy-four, two thousand thirteen, may refer to the Plenary Commission. Brings us to order seventy-five, two thousand thirteen.
Order seventy-five, two thousand thirteen, and ordinance authorizing blocking the tax commissioner to waive penalties and associate, when reported and under reported taxes, to their properly reported during the tax amnesty period, and either paid in full, during the tax amnesty period, or paid under any payment arrangement made, the city, during the tax amnesty period, granting amnesty and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, Mr. Crable. Motion to suspend the rules of order seventy-five, two thousand thirteen. Motion is second, suspend the rules, bro.
Crable.
Yes.
Heathley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Cole. Yes.
Suspend the rules, it's been approved. President, Mr. Crable.
Motion of adopt, order seventy-five, two thousand thirteen.
Motion is second, adopt order seventy-five, two thousand thirteen. Any comments or discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. President. I'm talking out of my mouth. 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 Kim, is there anything else you'd like to add to that?
No, I'm just going to.
Okay. All right, thanks, Mr. President. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, local?
Crable.
Yes.
Heathley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Cole. Yes.
Order seventy-five, two thousand thirteen, has been adopted. Yeah, that's all the ordinances on the introduction. Moving to, or this is a second reading, order sixty-five, two thousand thirteen.
Order sixty-five, two thousand thirteen, and ordinance authorizing appropriation of eleven thousand dollars from the general fund to parks services, the fireworks university.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Cole.
I'd like to make a motion that we waive the second reading of order sixty-five, two thousand thirteen.
I would motion a second to adopt order sixty-five, two thousand thirteen. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, local?
Crable.
Yes.
Heathley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Cole. Yes.
Order sixty-five, two thousand thirteen, has been adopted. Order sixty-six, two thousand thirteen.
Order sixty-six, two thousand thirteen, and ordinance authorizing appropriation of seven thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars within the water, any water capital land link, as far as daily company to repair, state route seventy-nine, Lord, for holding.
Mr. President, Mr. Heathley. I make a motion that we adopt order sixty-six, two thousand thirteen. Motion is second, to adopt, any comments or discussion? Mr. President? Yes, Mr. Johnson. To the gentleman, I think I'm like, hey. I'm talking out of my mouth. 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 It's like that tax thing, it's a one-time deal. Even less than you're free, I believe. Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, uh, local?
Crable.
Yes.
Heathley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Cole. Yes.
Order sixty-six, two thousand thirteen, has been adopted. Order sixty-seven, two thousand thirteen.
Order sixty-seven, two thousand thirteen, and ordinance authorizing directing the mayor to execute an amendment from an outward negotiating agreement between Level Thirty-Four Thirty-Nine and R C Ohio, Council Eight, A F L, C I O, and the City of Heath, according to posted security.
Mr. President. Mr. Henry.
Make a motion to adopt order sixty-seven, two thousand thirteen.
Motion is second, any discussion or comments? Seeing none, local?
Crable.
Yes.
Heathley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Cole. Yes.
Order sixty-seven, two thousand thirteen, has been adopted. Order sixty-eight, two thousand thirteen.
Order sixty-eight, two thousand thirteen, and ordinance amendment section one five nine point oh four, classified ordinances, City of Heath, final, relating to the employee classification claim.
Mr. Henry.
Make a motion to adopt order sixty-eight, two thousand thirteen.
Motion is second, to adopt order sixty-eight, two thousand thirteen. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, local?
Crable.
Yes.
Heathley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Cole. Yes.
Order sixty-eight, two thousand thirteen, has been adopted. All right, that's all the ordinances on the second reading. There are no resolutions on the first reading, and no resolutions on the second reading. Brings us the reports to city officials. They're gone. Oh, make sure everyone speaks loudly to the lady, pick up your comments.
I'm going to do a microphone, because I can't hear.
Wow. You probably don't have a phone.
No, I don't have.
Okay.
I don't have.
Um. My turn. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, there you go. That's right. Um, want to thank those in attendance, um, Becky, please, if you would, um, I know, I know you're one of, of, of the folks that helps coordinate, uh, uh, the dog paddle, but I know that there are others as well, like Shelby and such, that, that take, uh, a leadership role in that effort. Please, if you would, um, pass along, uh, my thanks, uh, for, uh, another great event, uh, this year. Um, it's, uh, uh, I, I agree with you, I, I think it's, I, I think it seems to have gotten a pretty firm footing, uh, and, and strong, uh, following, and, and if the numbers that are indicated are correct, um, it's something that it at least maintained, if not grew, uh, again this year, so, thank you for that. Um, a few other things that I wanted to cover. I was at the Grohl Lincoln County Board meeting this morning, and Commissioner Bob shared with us some information that apparently was included in the, uh, budget, the state budget that was, uh, recently passed. You know how it's, uh, they pack some things in there? This happens to be an additional, um, uh, open meeting law exemption, uh, in essence, uh, another reason for going into executive session. And, uh, let me, let me read to you, I, I, it's, it's listed as, uh, O R C section one two one point two two.
for going into executive session. And let me read to you, it's listed as O R C section one to one point two two. Open meeting law exemption for local economic development allows a public body subject to the open meetings law to hold an executive session to consider the terms of an application for economic development assistance to be provided or administered by a local government. The exemption applies only to the consideration of confidential information related to the applicants' marketing plans, specific business strategy, production techniques, or personal financial statements, or negotiations with other political subdivisions regarding requests for economic development assistance. This would include county land reutilization corporations. The provision also requires the unanimous form of a public body vote to hold the executive session for this specific exemption. And then as a reminder, a public body holds an executive session to consider such matters in motion and vote, hold that executive session shall state which one or more of the approved matters listed in those divisions are to be considered at the executive session. Anybody on council would like a copy of this, I'll make a copy of it for you, but it appears that the state has outlined an additional exemption to the open meeting law for this local government hours throughout the state. Yesterday afternoon, I attended a lunch at Cherry Valley Lodge that was focused on the world heritage site application with UNESCO for the New York Earthworks and two other affiliated earthworks in the state of Ohio. It was, I felt, a very productive lunch. There were folks literally from around the world that were in attendance. There was good discussion regarding what I feel to be the strengths of the application right now and also the weaknesses of the application. There is a component of this that would need support from city government, local governments, and when the time comes, we'll certainly be discussing those, but I just wanted to update the council on the fact that I attended that meeting, that it was a good meeting. Everybody feels that the world heritage application circuit is appropriate for the sites, and that I believe it would be an outstanding thing for the City of P and for Lincoln County and for the state of Ohio if we are someday to be able to attain that world heritage status. Finally, I just want to mention, if you're not aware, today is the first day of school for heat city schools. Last week, I had the privilege of attending at the middle school, Principal Jeff Heppleman's request, the parent student orientation nights for the sixth grade and then also the seventh and eighth graders. And I talked to everyone present there about the fact that we need to be supporting our school system and supporting the students within our school system. I talked to them about the fact that when I am sitting down at the table with businesses who are looking to locate here in the area, one of the most important things that they look for is educated and available workforce, a workforce that they know can be trained to meet the specific tasks they may have in their production. You don't get this without having a good school system with well-educated students that come out of it. I make sure they understood that, you know, that the future strength of our community depends on having well-educated kids coming through the school system, and that, you know, in order for our economy to continue to grow, that workforce that we have right now needs to continue to remain in place and perhaps even get even stronger. So I just want to mention this and pass that same message on to everyone here. It's important that we do what we can, I believe it's important, that we do what we can to support heat city schools, that we do what we can to support the educational experience of the students that are there. I know I often go to some of the schools to speak. Of course, Youth and Government Day heavily involves city government to help the eighth graders understand what's going on, but we also have this at the elementary schools from the fire department, police department, such. Heat City Schools is looking to implement a STEM-based education, I say, a more strongly grouped STEM-based education, science, technology, engineering, math. These are jobs that require, these are skills that are going to be required for jobs, not just today, but in the future. I've had the opportunity to work with Trevor Thomas, the new superintendent there, to offer whatever assistance and information I can regarding the STEM needs of our local businesses. Rick Platt has been involved in meetings with him as well, and as the school system looks to implement this program, more STEM-based, more project-based learning, it's going to need the assistance of the city and also our local businesses. And I think we should stand ready to support them in that effort and stand ready to support them in general to make sure that Heat City Schools remains one of the strongest school districts here in Broken County. That's all I have, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Al Otting?
Thank you, Mr. President, I have no report.
Lobbyer DeHorsen?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Start off at the end with fifth figure. Lady Serri?
I just want to also thank Becky that all the volunteers would be wonderful that they came on. I think that a lot of us entered into this computers ago, who are skeptical of how it's going to go, but you see that it's hard to imagine how completely it runs and you're fine to a machine. We don't worry ourselves about whether yesterday because it wasn't all that hot, and it was last summer, and there was still plenty of dogs there, and I did their last two hours and I'd say that they were still coming in up to after seven thirty, so it's a great thing, thank you, yeah.
Roger?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd say that it's absolutely brilliant, we're part of all years, so I couldn't.
That's all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I'd like to also say, thanks to you and all the people who've worked on it, also to Deb, congratulations, Tony Ford, and I know that that's something that needed very badly in this league in general, it's a good transition. And last, I'd just like to say with everybody, please give a moment of silence for the loss of our eight.
Okay. Lady, anything to add? Let's start with John Galloway on here.
Nothing.
John Galloway?
Nothing, thank you.
Well, yeah. Tom Rob?
Nothing.
Chief Shepherd?
Nothing.
Chief Hoven?
I just have a couple of things. The end of this week, but next week, the Sweet Corn Festival out of Millersport starts on the twenty-eighth, and we're at season thirty-first, so if you get out there, go to the Little Shakeup booth and buy a Little Shakeup. It's in the place they love here, their community service club. The first heat football game, no game, is on the thirtieth, Friday the thirtieth, so if you're not doing anything on Friday night, come out to eat time once football game. And then since Lynch is no longer here, the first field game would be on the thirty-first against Buffalo. Yeah, probably over there at Ripley.
Okay. That's all. Hustler? Hustler was a question. Two years.
I'd also like to request each council member to give me a copy of the committee reports. When I want to.
Okay, so that's any new business, none reading events? Mislanias? Nothing? Motion second, or favor?
Hi.